Welcome. Good evening. Welcome. Now, this is what I like to see at a budget meeting.
Yay!
When we're talking about an 140-plus million-dollar budget, and tonight, one of the things that we decided to do, as we've been telling everyone, well, I don't know, the last few meetings, the crowd was much, much smaller. We've been telling everyone that if our budget is voted down twice, then we're gonna have to cut 9.2 million dollars from our budget. So, what we decided to do, we've been doing presentations the last, geez, the last five meetings or so, relative to, you know, what the tax cap would allow us to raise taxes or recommend that we raise taxes. We talked about the fact that if we wanted to have the same programs with no cuts, we talked about what percentage that would be and how much that would cost per $100,000 house. So, what we decided to do and what we'll see tonight is we wanted to show everybody what nine point, or what a potential $9.2 million in cuts looks like, and then talk about various tax increases and such and what that would represent as far as a cost per $100,000 house and what that would be relative to in relation to cuts. So, before we get into that, we're gonna do our good news student recognition first. No? Do we have any for today? Yeah, we did. Okay. Okay. Sorry about that. I didn't mean to throw you a curve, Doc.
Good evening, everyone. So, tonight, the Poststanders Newspaper in Education Celebration Night was held at Henninger High School in Syracuse on March 8th. Students were recognized for their essays and cartoons focusing on the theme, "One Bright Idea That Could Improve My Life or the Lives of Others." The essay categories, category one and two, or grades one and two category. Third place was Kamara Corlis. Fourth place was Kate Capone from Cicero L. And Kamara is also from Cicero. Honorable mention, Jacob Hoffman from Cicero L. Grades three to five category. First place was Kyle Toms from Cicero L. Third place, oops. Third place was Anna Melfi, Cicero L. Honorable mention, Keith Peck from Cicero L. Also, Rachel Bavercheck from Gillette. Our cartoon winners, grade one and two category. Fifth place was Jonathan Bisaw from Cicero L. And our honorable mentions are all from Cicero L, Neeb Bach, Natalie Hook, and Cameron Witz.
Congratulations.
So, congratulations to all of our winners. I have to tell you, Cicero L rocked in this competition. They took home majority of the awards. And we are truly excited whenever we have the opportunity to do good news around our students and staff. So, thank you for sharing in that opportunity tonight.
I don't think there's anyone, well, I hope there's no one in this room that could say that those kids don't deserve the same education that my kids got when they graduated from this school district, so. Okay. We're gonna start with Kelly Farley. Come on up, Kelly. Grab the mic. Good evening, Kelly.
Good evening.
Yeah. We're easy group.
First of all, I'd just like to say, my name is Kelly Farley, and I teach first grade at Bear Road Elementary School, and I'm very thrilled to have that job. I would like to thank all the board members and everyone sitting tonight for their hard work and all the time that you put into what you do for North Syracuse Central School District. So, thank you very much. The reason I'm speaking tonight is, for the past several years, it's come, it's, in lunchroom, in the lunchroom, we try to think of ways to save money and make changes to the district that might not involve a lot of money. And one of the things we've discussed, my colleagues and I have, is having a different entry date for children at the kindergarten level. Moving that date, right now, I guess it's currently December 1st, but possibly moving that to September 1st. We did a little background, kinda informal data collection at Bear Road. The reading teacher looked into the first-grade classrooms, and currently, 40% of those children with late birthdays receive AIS services. That's kind of a substantial amount. So, I guess, although it wouldn't be a monetary savings immediately, it would ultimately incur savings as far as manpower and services and hopefully have a trickle-up effect throughout the grade levels. I just, you know, I'm pleading with you to look at changing the date for kindergarten students to that September date. I think it's worth looking into, and it's not a cost to the district, but it might save us, it might, and it might save the teachers some time and also help those kids, setting them up for just success rather than defeat. I don't know. Okay?
Thank you.
So, thank you for your time.
Christian Oliver.
Good evening, everyone of the board and people in the audience. I wanted to talk to you tonight quickly about the music department at the NSCSD School District. I know with budget cuts coming very close and everything happening, it's going to be a crucial time that we always look at where we can make cuts to help provide still an awesome education for each student in our district. I wanted to just give you a little shine on the whole K through 12 music department and a personal experience for me. When I started in third grade in Lake Shore Elementary, I had been diagnosed with a learning disability in language comprehension and formation of sentences and anything in the English language. It was through the music department that I learned strategies, skills, and necessary ideas to help me develop to be now top 50 in my class this year. The department throughout, in the instrumental, to the strings, to the choral education in band and orchestral, is vital to all our students. I have been able and blessed with this year going to elementary schools, middle schools, the junior high, and working very closely with the whole department in seeing how music affects our students. It gives them a vital idea of teamwork and how to build community and strategies, and it really shows them the power that they can be a part of something. And it is vital for music education in our schools. I know all of you probably feel the exact same way as I do, and I know the community does too. And we want to come together, and I really wanna make a strong thing because this is also March National Music in Our Schools Month. And we have actually come together with getting every single school in the district to do something special for this month. We've created a commercial, which I would be glad to send all of you a copy if you would like. All of these things, we're trying to promote CNS because it is on the rise as a department in music education and music striving. And as a future music educator, I wanna see that each student behind me in all the lower classes gets beyond the music education I got and will be future lifelong learners in music and appreciators and participants. So, to everyone in the community and the board, when we are looking, please keep that in mind. My prayers and thoughts are with you all as you have tough decisions ahead of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Bailey Eggleston.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. We're here to talk to you about the art department and how important it is for us. And my name's Bailey Eggleston. I'm a junior at CNS, and my focus is photography. Art has been so important to me ever since I can remember, and that's why I'm so thankful to go to a high school that provides a variety of electives. My teachers have given me an incredible amount of support and taught me so much, and it's the reason I've kept my head on my shoulders and the reason I wanna pursue a career in art. This year, I won two gold keys in scholastics, and I owe it all to my teachers for making me work so hard. CNS Art Club has opened my eyes to some really great colleges that I'm definitely applying to in the fall. And this year, I've grown so much, and it feels so good to have a passion for something. The classes I've taken have allowed me to define myself as an artist and find out who I am.
Hi, I'm Hannah Alvaro. I'm a junior also at CNS, and I'm not usually in front of big crowds, so bear with me. And one of the main reasons that I really enjoy CNS so much is because of all the variety of art classes that we have there. Art is my major, and I plan on attending an art school. And I'm so grateful to the teachers and everyone that's helped me so far in art. And I'm able to have that opportunity because of our vast art program. Through our art program, I've been opened up to so many different experiences. This year, I partook in scholastics, won a gold key, and me and Bailey also plan on taking AP Studio next year, which I'm very excited about. I've learned so much through Mrs. Haven, Mrs. Vanette, Mr. Ferranto, Mrs. Blasky, and Mrs. Cook, and especially Mr. Van. We are presidents of our club, and we just visited some art colleges in Boston. We actually went to New York City last year for an art club trip. And our teachers, Heather Blasky and Kara Cook, put in their own time, effort, money by making this trip happen. Art is absolutely my everything and the reason I look forward to waking up in the morning and going to school. The art program we have at CNS has gotten me through high school this far and hopefully it will for future generations.
Speaking on behalf of the future artists in CNS, we just wanted to say how thankful we are to have a program like this, to have so many art electives that help us grow as artists and prepare us for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Jeanne McKee.
You can sit. Good evening, board members, directors. My name is Jeanne McKee, and I'm a taxpayer in this district. I'm an employee of this district and a parent of three boys who have gone through and are still going through this district. My concerns, excuse me, are in concert with Sheila Millers, the blended kindergarten teacher that spoke last week. I've worked in Allen Road's Blended Kindergarten Program, at Main Street Early Ed Program, and Lake Shore Road's Second, Third, and Fourth Grade Special Ed Emotionally Disturbed Program. I've seen the importance of special ed and the blended programs from all facets. Without these programs, teachers' choices for placement are either regular ed, which could impede all learning and any progress that a student has made prior, or special ed, which really defeats the purpose of integrating most children into the regular ed classes. Main Street services three- to four-year-olds in the early ed program, and then they have the pre-K or the main, the regular ed kids that come in. Many of these regular ed kids that come in are referred, and then they become an EEP child. These numbers are staggering, and they increase every year. So, this number of future members of the ED and learning disabled children is only gonna increase. I've seen many children successfully integrate into regular ed because of these blended programs. So, please look carefully at the blended programs, not only for what they are, but what they, what the kids and students and families would be without them, especially at the pre-K, elementary, and middle school levels. This is a perfect example to me of spending a little now saves a lot later. Thank you.
Thank you. Tani Kaya. I hope I pronounced that correctly.
All right. Hi, I'm Tani Kaya, and I'm here representing the CNS Winter Drum Line. We're a group that's been in existence for 10 years now. I'm a six-year member, and since I've been here, we've been in the top three in our division five times, and we've been state champions once, possibly again this year. What it is, is a competing group. We compete in eight competitions each year against other teams around the state, ranging from all the way up north down to over in Rochester and sometimes even down towards New York City. And then we competed at championships, which is this year held at OCC. We're one of the biggest groups in the state this year. We have 35 kids competing in our group. And I know that a lot of the problem has been funding for us, and I would just like to note that much of our fees are paid through fundraising and through the $200 fee that we have to pay to be a part of this group, which goes towards our uniforms, sticks and mallets, proper marching shoes, props, and maintenance, and et cetera. And a lot of the help is actually donated by the parents. They come in and they donate all their time to make the props and to help create uniforms. And this year, our show required so much extra work by the parents that it was, really helped us to pay off. And personally, in the six years that I have been in Drum Line, I'm now captain. I feel like I've performed better academically because I had an outlet musically, each week to go and practice for six to nine hours and then perform every Saturday. And so, I'm really hoping that there's gonna be a lot more children who can have that experience in later years, though I'm a senior and I will be graduating. And if you guys need any more convincing about just how awesome Drum Line is, you can come to our exhibition performance. That'll be held this Saturday at the CNS Winter Guard Show here at the junior high, and we will be performing at about 8:00 PM. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Abe Zelenals, is that how you pronounce that? Come on, Abe.
Good evening. I'm Abe Zeleniac, and on behalf of my fellow teammates, I wanted to take the time to address my concerns about keeping our Winter Drum Line and Field Band at CNS. We need to keep our schools Drum Line and Field Band because of all the good it does for its members. Like every other sport, you will make friends and have many chances to get scholarships. Also, it will keep the kids of CNS away from bad things that do exist, such as drugs and alcohol. Colleges love to see if someone was in marching band or drum line, which will result in more kids from CNS getting into a good college. It is very good exercise. Despite the stereotype that we are all just nerdy band geeks, we have to do several push-ups, sit-ups, laps, and/or suicides, and many other core exercises. In fact, before we get our music and drill movements, we just exercise. Kate McAfflin, who lives in West Janice School District, after seeing last year's show titled Boot Camp, said, "High school field bands spend hours trying to perfect their shows in hopes of winning competitions and possibly taking on the state championship. But sometimes they do even more. Sometimes they stir emotions deep inside the heart. Sometimes they cause tears to flow. Sometimes they bring a love onto mind." The show reminded McAfflin about her son who died serving in Iraq. One thing that sets CNS apart from other schools is its many different programs. You can be an athlete, mathlete, or band kid, and I don't think anyone wants that to change. Since I saw my first field band show, it was my dream to become center snare. And if you cut this program, I will never be able to fulfill my dream. This is why our Drum Line and Field Band is so important to my students of CNS, and it would be a shame to see it go. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Sarah Nickrbocker, and I'm a senior at CNS. And this is actually my first year doing the Winter Drum Line program, but I've played vule since third grade, and I just wanted to kind of reaffirm what he said about our music programs and how much they mean to us. It's really helped us become a family, all the music kids. We always have to be there for each other as we face budget cuts and, you know, just kind of the lack of appreciation we sometimes get from our fellow students, but we're always here for each other. And our teachers through these programs have helped us push to succeed more, become leaders, always go for the highest we can go. And I just, you know, I feel that now as I'm in a leadership position at CNS, I'm president of SAD and vice president of Honor Society. I'd just like to thank those teachers for pushing me to become a leader and always keep trying, never give up. And I actually went to Yale, Princeton, and Georgia on the past three summers and did summer programs for politics. But I feel like I wouldn't have even been encouraged to go in for that if I hadn't had these music teachers pushing me the whole way since third grade. And it'd really be a shame to see our programs go because we just, we care so much about these programs and, yeah.
I'm Trevor, and this is my third year in the CNS Drum Line and the CNS Field Band. This will be my fourth season in the summer. I'd just like to say that the grading requirements for these, you have to have a 70 or above average, and you can only be failing one class. And I can just tell you, that's pushed me to keep my grades up. I'm not a good math student, but I work hard, and I now have an 88 in geometry, so I can stay in Drum Line, and that keeps my average up. I'm actually on track for honor roll this year, and being in these programs really helped. And if they weren't there, I mean, I would still do good in the school, but, I mean, these programs pushed me to do it. And I love them, and I would just hate to see them go, and I wanna see future students enjoy them as much as I did. Thank you.
Simon Sterns.
Hi, my name is Simon Sterns. I'm the parent of a fourth grader, Allen Road, and I'd like to thank you for holding these meetings and for the job you do here. I wanted to just share a few brief comments about the music program and what it means to me as the parent of a child in this school district. The elementary school music program has helped our daughter tremendously with her academics and her social skills. Her violin lessons started in the third grade, and I don't know of many third graders that can say that they have been exposed to the romance languages, that they're learning Latin and Italian, that they're working on fractions and base-two mathematics, or that they're learning physics of sound waves and how temperature affects the material of the instrument. And my third grader wouldn't tell you that either because she didn't know that she was learning all of those things. The concepts that she's learned in music and in strings have really put her ahead of the curve when it comes to academics. It sparked an interest in her and a talent that we didn't know she had that we are thrilled to foster. Because of her exposure to strings in the third grade, she was asked to join the district-wide orchestra for fourth grade, which I think if you stick around, they're performing here Wednesday. I encourage you to attend. This was really her first opportunity to be with a group of like-minded students, students who share her interests and her talents, and it's opening the doors to new experiences for her. And as a parent, I'm thrilled. Last year, we had to consider, did we want to keep our daughter in the North Syracuse School District, or was it time to move her to another school? We looked at charter schools, we looked at private schools, and we considered them. We toured them. But one thing became clear. All of them started music and strings in the fifth grade, and that would mean that she would lose out. She'd lose out on this, this new skill she has and everything she loves, all the friends that she's made in orchestra. And because of that, mainly, we decided to keep her in this district. You know, there's a lot of talk, there's a lot of tough decisions to be made. I would encourage you to not only consider keeping the music program intact, but make it stronger. You know, I've got a two-year-old son, and I look forward to sending him to this school district, to Allen Road Elementary, where he can start his own instrument, maybe in third grade, maybe in second. The decision's up to you guys. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, Don. What's the number, what's the percentage for all the same programs, no cuts? What's that percentage?
12.7.
And how much is that a year?
What's that?
How much is that a year per $100,000 house approximately?
About $264, $268.
So, for, I don't know, 75 cents a day, we don't have to cut a thing. So for, I don't know, 75 cents a day, we don't have to cut a thing. I could do without that Dunkin' Donuts once a week. Go ahead, Don.
Well, thank you. After all those eloquent comments and very powerful stories, it's difficult to give a presentation like this. But I appreciate everyone's attention, and I want to emphasize that no decisions have been made.
Yes, thank you.
We're just sharing ideas, sharing thoughts in light of our current economic situation. So to recap, from things we've talked about over the last couple of months, North Syracuse has been struggling financially for the past three years. Our budget this year, 11-12, is less than it was three years ago. Since 2008, 2009 expenditures have been cut $15.2 million, including 200 positions. Our 2012-13 non-school tax revenues, that's all the revenues we get except for the amount from our tax levy that our local taxpayers pay, are projected to be down 4.5 million or 7.9% from 2011-12. I have a chart here, I'll show you more about that. We have a limited fund balance and minimal reserves. You're probably reading about other districts that are spending down their reserves. You know, the North Syracuse Central School District has not overtaxed its citizens to build large fund balances and significant reserves. We have appropriate levels of reserves given the liabilities that we have. North Syracuse is ranked 666th in New York State out of 676 districts in terms of student spending. We spend less per pupil than all other districts in Onondaga County in our BOCs except one. Our tax cap, that's the calculation that New York State is requiring us to do this year, shows a tax cap increase of 4.78%. 1.68% of that increase relates to our Smith Road project, which was already approved by the taxpayers. And I'll show you that calculation in a moment. Our 2012-13 budget deficit is $9.2 million. In order for us not to have that deficit, as Pat Carbone has just indicated, we would need to have a 12.7% tax levy increase. So the goal of this presentation is to explore ways in which we can close the budget deficit. Many of you have seen this slide before. On the left, you see our budget numbers. As you can see, our 2008-2009 budget was $137.1 million. That's about $600,000 more than our 2011-12 budget of $136.4 million. And the way that was attained is that cost increases have been offset by cuts of about $15.2 million in expenditures over the last three years. Our tax levy has gone up about $7.3 million. And that's to make up for the fact that our revenues from all other sources other than the levy have gone down by $7.9 million over that period of time. So here's the crux of the matter. Comparing revenues for 2011-12 to our projected revenues for 12-13. And you can see our general aid, which includes state and federal aid, our pilots, our sales taxes, our use of fund balance, our rents, and our other revenues are all down totaling $4.5 million or 7.9%. Building aid is up for the 2012-13 year. Again, due to the Smith Road facility or building coming online and the debt service kicking in for that, where our aid is up by 1.8 million. And that basically partially offsets the reduction in revenues. So our non-levy revenues are actually down year-over-year by 2.6 million or 4.1%. And what that means is that if we wanted to have a zero increase in our overall budget for the year, the tax levy would need to increase at least $2.6 million in order to spend the same amount of money next year as we're going to spend this year. So again, things we need to consider when we make expenditure cuts. We have about a month. On April 16th, the board's going to adopt the budget. We can't cut mandated items, those required by law. Although members of the board and members of our administration led by Dr. Dice have met with legislators, and we've talked to them about giving us some mandate relief. That's yet to come. Any changes that we consider must be permitted under our existing labor agreements. They have to be negotiated. And since 77% of our budget is personnel and related costs, most of the cuts we consider relate to people or position eliminations. So let's talk about the tax cap calculation again. This is a calculation mandated by law. What I'm going to show you, this tax levy increase of 4.78% has not been adopted by the board. We're simply doing the calculation that the state has required us to do. So the first number on there, $72.7 million, is the levy for the 11-12 year, the year we're in right now. We had a slight growth in our tax base, so that allows us to increase that levy to $73.4 million. The rest of the calculation, the next line, is our pilot revenue for 11-12. That's the payment in lieu of tax agreements that we have. So that incents business to move into the North Syracuse area, and they get some discount on their school taxes as a result. The next line is our tax levy for capital for the 11-12 year. And I want to draw your attention. That $2.2 million represents the local share of our debt service for the 11-12 year. Skip down a few line items, and you'll see the local share that's projected for next year, 3.5 million or 3.4 million. That difference of about $1,200,000 is the local share of the debt service associated with Smith Road. That represents about 1.68% of the tax levy increase. The bottom line is that in working through this formula, the state formula indicates that our levy should increase by $3.4 million or 4.78%. If you take out the capital piece of it, our levy limit increase would increase about 3%. So let's, this is a new slide that I haven't shown before, but this is important because it gets us to the $9.2 million deficit. So our current budget for expenditures is $136.4 million, the number on the top. Our budget cost increases, these are increases due to labor agreements, these are increases due to fuel costs, these are increases due to a variety of expenditures that the district has to manage. And our expenditures are up 4.9% or $6.7 million. The initial budget we've been talking to the community about over the last several weeks is $143,186,335. Our budgeted revenues for this year, the year we're in, are $136.4 million. As I've just described in previous slides, our decrease in revenues, our operating revenues, is 7.9% or $4.4 million. And our increase in building aid gives us a net non-levy revenue loss of $2.6 million. So our initial budget for revenues, assuming a zero increase in the tax levy, is $133,905. And the difference between $133,905 and $143,186 is $9.2 million. That's the deficit. So the way we close that deficit is one of two ways. We either cut expenses or we increase taxes. And that's the debate that'll be going on for the next month, how much to increase school taxes and how much cuts we can make while preserving programs. So what I'm going to take you through is a dozen slides now. No decisions have been made. We've identified possible expenditure reductions in a variety of areas, and I'm going to take you through those right now. In the administrative area, we've identified a million dollars' worth of cuts. Some of these have already been acted on. We've already eliminated our director of commuter technology position and our director of safety and security. The next line on MVP USA for retirees, we've got an opportunity to offer our retirees health insurance that's pretty attractive to them from a cost perspective and would save the district $133,000. It's optional, it's something we think will be attractive to our retirees, and we'll be telling them more about that. And if they elect that, it could save the district $133,000. We have, with this interest rate environment, been working on refinancing some of our debt. We've concluded the lion's share of that, and we've got a small piece that we'll be concluding here in the next 30 days. But we've saved about $295,000 in refinancing. That's interest expense that we've saved. Currently, as you know, because we're under a contingency budget, our community pays for the use of facilities. If we continue to charge our community for facilities, we think we can raise another $50,000 next year. We're talking about the possibility of eliminating a typist position here at the junior high, an assistant principal at Gillette Road Middle School, and an assistant director of special ed in our district office that oversees our special ed programs, as well as a dean at the junior high and a dean at the high school. These are difficult cuts, particularly given the APPR and a number of things that are going on in the district. But they're out there, and we're talking about them. In the area of art, we're going to be talking about class sizes in a couple of slides to come. And if we did increase our elementary class sizes, we could reduce the art that's offered at the elementary school by half a person. We've also got some electives, video production, photo one, photo two, and photo three that we could consolidate some of those electives, including the art elective for portfolio prep. The total savings in art would be $80,000 if we chose to do these items. In athletics, now bear with me here, we've broken up athletics in a number of pieces. If you remember, last year, we proposed eliminating select assistant coach positions. If we did those positions proposed last year, we'd save about $30,000. We also have some supplies in athletics that we could delay or not purchase in the next year, saving $20,000. We could eliminate some modified teams where we have duplicate teams. That would be girls' basketball, boys' basketball, softball, oops, sorry about that, a football team and one of our girls' volleyball teams. That would save $21,000. There'd be some related reduction in the amount of officials and transportation associated with athletics. We could go further on the assistant coaches and eliminate all assistant coaches. This would be the difference from the ones mentioned above, the select coaches, and that would save another $74,000. And if we chose to do away with all athletics as a district and not have any sports at all, we would eliminate those teams, coaches, the athletic director, the secretary, and two trainers, and the total of that would be $1.2 million. So our total athletic programs today are costing us, you know, a little over $1,303, and that would be the elimination of all sports. In the area of business education, fashion marketing could be eliminated as an elective. Computer business communications could be eliminated as an elective. And we could close the career center here at the junior high. That would total $53,800. To clarify, before I proceed with the slides, obviously FTE, or maybe not obviously, that's why I'm mentioning it, FTE reduction is a full-time equivalent reduction. So in this slide, the first line item says 5.7. That would be 5.7 full-time positions. I have a column on all of these slides, whether something's mandated or not. As I mentioned earlier, we're not eliminating anything that's mandated. And we've looked at a couple of different scenarios for the reduction of teaching positions that would result in increased class sizes. So the first two line items address 7 through 12 teaching, and if we could potentially eliminate between the two of them, 11.7 positions. In the K6 area, we could eliminate potentially 17 positions for a total of teacher eliminations of $2.3 million. And to keep in mind that our current elementary class size is 22 students per class. We'd like to keep kindergarten at 22, but grades 1 through 6, under this scenario, if all these teachers were eliminated, we'd go to a class size of 28. 7 through 12, although we targeted the similar number of class size, they would increase across all sections and courses, but depending on the section of that class. Class sizes would vary, but would be considerably higher than they are today. In the area of English, we would eliminate a number of electives, children's literature, SAT prep for English, speech, which is a public speaking class, teen leadership, and tools for success here at the junior high. And then, as we discussed last week, reading recovery has been talked about. There would be no reduction in staff. The reading recovery team would be redeployed to assist in reading, but we would avoid a $17,000 fee we currently pay BOCs for staff development. In the area of family and consumer science, we would consolidate sections, eliminating 1.1 or FTEs or $88,000. In the area of health, we would consolidate sections again, eliminating .6 or $48,000. In the area of maintenance and operations, we had a project that we were considering at the district office relative to some asbestos abatement and carpet removal. We've got some very old carpet and whatnot. And so, that was budgeted at $150,000. We would remove that from the budget. We had some contractual repairs, we've cut back. Building and repair supplies, we've cut back. We would eliminate an equipment replacement for a wing mower we were considering. And again, we would just delay the purchase of that equipment and continue to maintain the equipment. At some point in that process, it becomes more costly to maintain the equipment you have. And if you can imagine with a wing mower, the wider the blade, the wider the cut area, the more efficient the cut, and the less labor you spend doing it. So it's a point of diminishing returns as we delay those, but it's something we can delay in the short term. Utility savings, we've been very fortunate that we've got some new transportation pricing. So this is one that's a done deal. We're going to save at least $135,000 in the transportation of our utilities. And also, we're in the process right now of participating in a consortium to rebid the purchase of our gas and electric, and we anticipate we'll save $100,000 in that area. We're considering the elimination of one custodian to share MNO in transportation and district office due to her retirement. And then we're looking at some other staff reductions in the area of maintenance and operations, but primarily maintenance and grounds. That would be another $70,000. So that would be a $582,000 savings in the maintenance and operations area. SAT prep in math, we'd eliminate that elective or consider eliminating that elective, again, based on enrollment. In the area of music, again, like I mentioned earlier, if we eliminated or reduced class sizes, we would not need as many K6 music teachers. And this would be the elimination of a half a position or $40,000. We'd eliminate some music supplies. And in deference to the gentleman who spoke earlier, on the list here are elementary band in the fourth grade, elementary orchestra in the third grade, elementary orchestra in the fourth grade. Those would be pretty significant savings, as you can see, in terms of both FTE and the related dollars. We would consider eliminating a CNS instrumental band teacher and CNS basic musicianship, both .2 for $13,400 each. So the total savings in the music area would be $417,600. I want to emphasize that we're not eliminating all music. We would still have music programs beyond the elementary school. In physical education, you'll see two lines here that say K6 physical education based on elementary class sizes. Again, if we increase the class sizes, there'd be fewer classes that need gym and fewer phys ed teachers required at the elementary level. And if we chose to do that, we would eliminate a half a head count, a full head count if we eliminate all of the elementary teachers proposed. And then also, New York State law does not require physical education for grades 10 through 12. And so, we've talked about the possibility of an opt-out program where we would give our students a chance to opt out of PE. The two, there are, I believe, eight phys ed teachers at CNS. This would represent a potential reduction of two FTE or $160,000 in total in the phys ed area. We have the opportunity to eliminate $240,000 of cost. In the science area, we'd consolidate sections in the both 7 to 9 grade levels as well as 10 through 12. We have a teacher aide in the science center that's working with us on preparing lab kits and whatnot, and we would reconfigure that and therefore reduce by half an FTE. And we've got some nominal dollar amounts in contracted services and supplies. The total opportunity in science would be $65,444. In social studies, we'd eliminate a few electives. Geography, on the basis that geography is taught within the core curriculum and crucible for change and teen leadership. Those two electives combined are .2 or $13,400 each. The social studies area, we would The social studies area, we would cut $26,800 if we chose to pursue those. In the area of special education, there's a lot on this page. We're looking at a total of $2.2 million, and one of the big items, if you look at the bottom of the slide, is non-mandated teaching assistance. We have on this slide about 58 teaching assistants that support with our special needs programs. They're an integral part of the program, and it would be difficult certainly to remove them, but they are non-mandated, and therefore they made the list of potential cuts. Moving back to the top of the list, we're looking at, we have a 12-1-4 program in four locations in the district. Those locations are not at full enrollment, so we have less than 12 students, and we believe that we could run the 12-1-4 program in three locations as opposed to four, eliminating the program at the North Syracuse Junior High. This would allow us to eliminate four teaching assistants as well as one special ed teacher. It would also reduce the number of transitions that these children had and allow us to have a higher occupancy in those classes. We've talked about, folks were at the last meeting, to talk about the blended kindergarten program, still on the list, but something that we're considering. And then, teaching assistance at the testing center, there are four of those, that would total $183,160. So the total for special education would be $2.2 million that we would consider cutting. In the technology area, again, we would consolidate sections. This would give us an opportunity to cut .8 FTE or $64,000. In the transportation area, as you're probably aware, last year, we rerouted the transportation routes or the bus routes. We eliminated five buses, and we created the new bus stops that where children are walking up to 500 feet to a bus stop. This winter was not representative. We have not gotten a good opportunity to see how those bus stops are working. I will say that we've had minimal complaints or concerns by families in the district regarding the new bus stops. That doesn't mean we haven't had any, but we've had minimal. And so, for the 2012-13 year, we're going to continue to look at routing, but the only cut that we're considering at this time is opportunistically cutting part of the storekeeper. This is the person that manages parts within the maintenance center, and the person is retiring next month, and we would like to fill that position with a halftime employee to save $40,756. In the co-curricular area, co-curricular are all of the extracurricular activities that, such as clubs, where we have advisors and where we use chaperones and whatnot. So the first item on the list are the various chaperones that we have budgeted for various school events. The next item is webmasters. We have a webmaster that gets a stipend in each of our buildings to manage the webpage for their building. And then we have personnel costs associated with stipends for the various advisors for all of our club activities. That's the biggest item. It totals $258,957. Then we have supplies, and then additional supplies for the intramurals program, and that totals $318,000, $362,000. That would be the opportunity if, in fact, we eliminated all co-curricular as listed on this page. In the area of professional development, we've broken this into a few pieces, and we would consider eliminating up to $150,000 of professional development. $100,000 of it would relate to the actual cost of the development in-house and BOSI's training that our folks would go to, but we would also save $50,000 in substitute teacher costs. It's a total $150,000 potential savings in the area of professional development. And then finally, we have a program called the 8.5 program here at the North Syracuse Junior High, and one option for that program is to take those students and bring them up to the high school and have them do Apex, which is an online supervised online learning system where they can do credit recovery and get back on track. We would eliminate one position there, saving $80,000. So the total of the cuts that I've just reviewed with you are $9.2 million. Now, to orient you, this tax increase and required cuts chart, the $9.2 million gives us a 0% increase in the levy. That would mean we would spend about $2.6 million less next year than we spend this year. The total of the columns, the increased tax levy, the $727,000 plus the 8.5 million, those columns total $9.2 million. They're just broken up between levy and required cuts, which kind of worries where I started this presentation. In order to close the $9.2 million gap, we have to decide how much we can increase the levy and how much we can cut. And this chart shows you in ranges from 1% to 10%. And I'll just reiterate, 12.7% would be required in order to keep our programs just the way they are. And since we didn't think that was feasible, the chart only goes from 1 to 10.
And that was, one more time, that was how much per thousand increase on a $100,000 house?
$268.
$268 on a $100,000 house.
And the 4.78%, which is the tax cap calculation prescribed by the state, would allow us to cut $5.8 million, and it would be a $100 increase on a $100,000 home. And it's really important to note that the amount in the tax increase for a $100,000 home does not include STAR. So if you did live in a $100,000 home and you got basic STAR, $30,000 of your property value would be exempted, and therefore, your increase would only be $70 as opposed to $100. The reason we didn't present the STAR here is that many people live in homes higher than $100,000, and as your home increases in value, the percentage that the STAR rebate reduces your increase declines, and so we would need to do individual calculations.
So if we had a four, if we determined that we could go out with 4.78%, we'd still have to make almost, you know, not quite three-quarters of the cuts that we would have to make if we had a 0% tax.
Right, 5.8 million.
Because if we have a 0%, we have to cut 9.2.
That's correct.
Okay. So we still have to cut 5.8.
And as I mentioned in an earlier slide, in order to just spend the same amount of money in the 12-13 year that we spent in the 11-12 year, we'd need a 3.5% increase in the tax levy or a $2.6 million tax levy increase, and we'd have to cut $6.7 million. It's important to note that if we do 4, 7, 8 or lower, we would need a simple majority. That's one taxpayer vote of yes more than all the no's, you know, one yes vote more than no votes. If we went above 4, 7, 8, we'd need a supermajority, and that would mean that 60% of the voters would need to vote yes.
And then, if, again, I know I keep saying this, but I think it's very, very important for everyone to understand where we are here and the water that we're treading. If our tax, our vote goes down twice, then by law, we cannot raise the levy one penny, which means we will be forced to make $9.2 million in cuts.
Yeah, everything on those lists would be cut if the vote goes down twice. There is no such thing as a contingency budget anymore.
Yeah, no contingency budget.
We went down with a 5 point, what did we ask for last year, 5.1, 5.2?
What did we ask for last year?
And actually, the way it worked out last year, if you see the levy increase, the total levy was 5.1% on the slide here, you see that, and that's how that worked out. Kind of back to the process where we, oops, sorry about that. Back to the process where we kind of started, we've got about a month. So here's $9.2 million worth of cuts, and we've got a month to decide what the levy's going to be and what items we're going to cut. This is our calendar. We're currently at March 19th, and the board will deliberate, work with administration until April 16th, at which time the board will adopt the budget. On May 8th, we'll have our formal budget hearing. At that point, all the decisions are made, and we're just communicating with the public the specifics of the budget, and on May 15th, we'll have our budget vote.
Now, just for the benefit of those in the audience, these numbers that we're looking at today, just briefly describe how we came about getting these numbers, somewhat the process. I know that you, Dr. Dice, you asked all the directors.
You mean the process?
The process in terms of, yes, is how we came up with these numbers, because I think that's important. I don't, I know that this, I mean, I'm frankly sick to my stomach. I could throw up when I look at this list.
So, as we began to discuss what the budget process would look like, one of the things that we wanted to do was ensure that we engaged our stakeholders, and stakeholders being the directors as well as principals, in the conversation around what potential cuts or recommendations they could put forth. And so what we ended up doing was asking the directors to connect with the appropriate staff and to review all of the departments that fell under their purview and to come back with recommendations or areas for savings. And we took probably a week and a half to two weeks to go through all of those presentations. We went through line by line what their recommendations were, and then that information was then shared with principals. We also asked principals for feedback and input around what were some of the things that they thought could be put forth as potential recommendations. We've also had a number of conversations as a leadership team to talk about what savings do we think we could also put forth in terms of various departments and kind of taking a second go-round or second look at the recommendations that were made by the department chairs or department heads. And that information was compiled. We've had numerous conversations just trying to look at what the overall number is that we need to get to if we want to ensure that we can still provide the same type of services to our students. And I know that there's been a lot of conversation around the district coming out with the 4.78, but as Donald indicated in the beginning, and as we've indicated in all of our meetings up to this one, that no final decisions have been made, but we wanted to be transparent. We wanted to share with the community where we were financially and what the district would look like if indeed we had to cut 4.78. And so we're here today with that full presentation. As Donald went by subject area, by subject area, you clearly have a clear list of items that are on the radar for potential cuts. The board will be going back along with leadership to talk about those potential cuts and to then discuss what a final recommendation will look like, as well as trying to also determine where we fall in terms of the tax, the number. And one of the things that we've been talking about is really wanting to hear from the community, all of you in the audience and those who are watching the board meeting, what you believe the tax increase should look like. And so, we actually are looking at either putting something on our website where you'll have the opportunity to chime in, as well as for anyone who would like to leave that information for us tonight, writing it down on a piece of paper. You really don't have to put your name. We're just really very much interested in what the community thinks the community will accept as a potential number. I think it's important that everyone recognizes wherever that number is, that if it's not 4.78 and that number decreases, well then, once again, we're in a position where we're cutting at the core of what we are all committed to doing, which is ensuring that we educate our kids in the best possible way. So we're hoping that you're here, hearing what our concerns are, hearing where we currently are financially, and that you're going to be spreading the word to those who are not here, that at least there's a clear understanding of what these cuts could potentially do to North Syracuse.
And before, what I think we're going to do next is we're going to go to our board committee reports or comments. This way, if anyone wants to speak, we can do that. Again, I just, last year, when we were going through this process, I, you know, made some comments relative to where I think we feel that we're going in education in New York State. And, you know, I don't read syracuse.com or any of that stuff anymore, because I read some of the comments and I said, you know, some of this stuff just is worth looking at. You know, we're in a position where we, you, whoever out there lives in our district, you own those buildings. The teachers and the employees are your employees as well as they are ours. You look at these little, these young kids that were here tonight that are winning awards, and you look at some of our athletes, and you look at some of our musicians, and the kids that go through our school district, and it is our responsibility to educate them. You know, whether you, unless you want to crawl under a rock, no matter where you live, you're going to be responsible for educating the children in your community. That young kid with the red shirt and glasses could be the president of the United States someday for all we know. And it's time for us to decide what we're willing to pay to educate the children in our community. I mean, without, you know, even if we spend the same amount as we spent last year, which represents a 3.5% increase, we still have to cut $6.7 million out of the budget, which is the majority of all of this stuff that we just looked at. I mean, I don't have children in the district anymore. My kids are grownups. They're beautiful, wonderful young women that are doing things that those people in the audience helped them to do with their dedication, with the fact that they have teachers that they, we saw a teacher in a restaurant the other night, my kids were home, and this teacher remembered my two daughters and went up to them, asked them what they were doing, and that teacher played an important role in what my daughters are today. And I'll pay 12%, and I don't, I didn't get a raise this year. So with that, I ask you, let us know, whether it be when we get the website set up so you could tell us online, or we're talking about having a suggestion box, we don't have it here tonight, but slipping a piece of paper in there, telling us what you're willing to pay, because the school districts in the state that aren't having these problems are the school districts where the taxpayers pay the majority of the cost of the education of the kids. And once you make that switch and you become less dependent on state aid, when the state decides they're going to cut the aid, it doesn't impact you as much. So you don't have to ask taxpayers for large tax increases to make up the difference. And that's all I'm going to say. So with that, Dr. Dice, did you have anything else you wanted to say? Okay, do we have any committee reports for tonight? Comments? Comments, then if you want to start at one end, whoever wants to speak. Michael, did you have anything to say?
No, not right now.
Okay, Jackie?
I think Pat Carbone said it all about the budget cuts. I did want to add that board members and administration and the union have spent a great deal of time over the past month or so talking to legislators about, and informing them about our district and the districts all around here and all through New York State that are having this same deficit issue, and how the funding formula that the state has in place is unfairly penalizing those districts that are high needs or moderate need districts like ours. We also have people right now in Albany working for this to bring We also have people right now in Albany working for this, to bring awareness to this very issue, and I just want to thank them for spending their time, their energy, and their money doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Go ahead.
There are several things. One of the, one of the things that came to light as we looked at this, and we looked at the tax cap formula, and Don referred to it tonight when he told you, that of the 4.78% that we would be allowed to raise the taxes without going to a supermajority, 1.6% of that represents our debt service. That's money that the voters said that we could spend to repair and renovate our buildings, and we now have an obligation, just the way you have a mortgage, to pay that money. This crazy law then says to us, well, if your taxpayers in your district vote your budget down twice, you're going to be penalized doubly. First, because you have a zero tax impact, and we're not going to allow you to take that 1.6% out that you're already obligated to, we're going to make you cut program even more to cover those dollars. And this is something that even Senator DeFrancisco did not realize when a delegation from our district went to visit him. He had not thought or realized that this would be a double penalty that we would have to pay. It's important that we recognize this, and perhaps, you know, through our lobbying efforts, and when we let the legislators know what we want and what we need, that we point out this inequity to them, and perhaps, if we, you know, all do it, we can get this changed, because it's crazy.
Thanks, Sandy.
I just wanted to add that Phil Cleary has set up those meetings with our legislators, which has been awesome, and I did get a call from John DeFrancisco's office today to ask me more about the tax cap and the negative impact that the formula is having on North Syracuse, and I got their commitment to help us out in the future. I'm not sure how that's going to materialize, but they got the message anyway.
Well, and I think we've need, got to spread the message, because it just doesn't affect North Syracuse. It affects every other school district in the state in the same way. And I find it very difficult to believe that they understood what the full impact of this would be on the school districts. It's a double penalty.
One thing that is impressive, that I just, I hope I'm not speaking out of school here, but the, no pun intended, the legislators have been impressed that the NSCA, the administration, teachers, members of the Board, have all been going to these meetings together and really singing from the same hymnal, and I think that makes a really good impression on them about the type of people here in North Syracuse, and so that process has been very effective.
The other thing that I want to point out to people is, and Pat mentioned it, and in talking to a friend earlier this week, it was, again, crystallized to me, our schools are an asset or a liability to this community, to other communities. You know, we want people to pay a fair amount of taxes to support the schools. By the same token, if we make all these cuts, this school district is not going to look the same as it does now. It's not going to present the same opportunities to the students coming up, as it did to some of the very articulate young people who spoke tonight. Your schools are going to affect your property value. If the schools are not strong schools that offer opportunities to children, then young families are not going to want to live in your community, and the value of your property, the value of your house, is going to go down. And that's something that I think, you know, we've got to think about. This is a sword that cuts two ways. Have I said enough?
Thank you, Sandy.
Tony?
I think for me, it is the most of difficult tight ropes that we're walking, because every day I get approached by people in the community who can't pay another cent in taxes. They can't afford another cent. They're out of jobs, or they're retired and on their minds, in their minds, they're on a fixed income, and they're choosing between medication and food, or they're choosing between doctor's appointments or whatever. And so, as a community, we're having to hear from you to tell us where we should be. You know, last year, we thought we could come out with a five, knowing that we were going to have another tough year again this year, and the community voted us down. So, we're stuck between a rock and a hard place. If we put the tax levy too high, then it goes down. If we make it too low, then we lose a whole bunch of people, and the quality of our schools. So, we're damned if we do, and we're damned if we don't, and we just need some direction. We really are needing some serious direction, because it's not up to all of us to decide what direction this school district goes in, but we're the ones that have to make this final decision, in a month no less. So, if anybody can, is willing to, give us an idea of what we're willing, and I know most of the people here in the auditorium are clapping in response to, you know, how we feel about our education, but there's a whole lot of other people that are sitting out there that are making decisions that might not necessarily reflect how we feel in this auditorium. And so, we need to be mindful of that, and we need all the direction we can get. Thank you.
Careful. Nope. Bob?
I really don't want to talk about the budget tonight, because I think we need to really look at the things, but I want to thank all the young people that came tonight in support of their programs. I especially want to thank, and I know you're in the audience, but I won't make you stand up, CJ or others, the greatest play I've ever seen in my life, Beauty and the Beast. And I would ask any of my fellow Board members to please go to it this weekend. I'm going to famous artists, but I'm going to tell you, tomorrow's show is going to be nothing like what happened at CNS. That is what our music program, that is what our drama, that's what the art people do at our school district. Thank you very much for that. And I also want to thank the gentleman that talked from Allen Road, because I would say to my Board members, please, please come on Wednesday night to see this auditorium filled up there in the balcony, and down here with all the students, grades four through 12, with their musical, violins, violas, cellos, string instruments, and see what our school district has. There isn't another school district in central New York that has the program that we have, string instrument. Please come on Wednesday night for that. Thank you.
Hey, Bob, my girls were orchestra girls, third grade, Smith Road Elementary, all the way through school, all the way through high school. Go ahead, Pat.
I'm like Bob, I don't want to talk about the budget. But, you know, I have to say that my family is one of those young families that Sandy talks about. I have five children, two of which are in elementary school now, and I am sick when I look at these lists of cuts. And the thing that I struggle with, somebody asked me, what do you think you should do with the budget? The problem is, is that we weren't elected to do what we wanted to do with the budget, but what the community wanted us to do with the budget. So, they're two different things for most of us. These cuts are deep. It's going to take years to get back to where we are today. It's going to take years to figure out the best way to do what we need to do with education with limited resources. I echo what Pat has to say often with, we have to decide where our priority is with our education, and does the community want to pay for it? Because it's been proven time and time again that if we are responsible for more of our costs versus depending on state aid, when state aid reductions are made, it doesn't hurt us as much. But, this is going to hurt to start. We went out last year thinking that we were asking for a 5.1% tax levy, which, on average, our revenues did increase by that, but most of us saw a 2.1% tax impact. That's what we voted on as a Board after the budget was passed, we got our state aid, and it was 2.1%. You know, I think we need to hear, like Dr. Dice said, we need to hear what people want. We need to hear it often, and the same people that are asking us to do these things need to show up and give us support, not here, but on Election Day or Voting Day. You know, I think often, we don't say thank you enough, and I have tried to do that, you know, I have mentioned to other directors. This is probably the best set of presentations that we have had for our budget, and Wayne did a great job. But, you know, this is more understandable to me, as a layperson, I can, I get this stuff. But, you know, I was at an event at Bear Road last week, and there were teachers that were there, I left that building around eight-ish, and there were teachers that were still there. They didn't get extra pay. They weren't there with their own children. They were there themselves. Some of them had their own children with babysitters, which was actually an additional expense to them. So, it cost them money to spend time at their school. So, that showed me that those teachers put my children as a priority, so... There's probably some people sitting over here that their ears ring often, because somebody had thanked me for what I was doing, and I said, you need to thank one of my high school social studies teachers for what I'm doing today. I thought that this was important because of how important it was for her to be involved with my life then. So, you know, some of us need to walk away from this, digest this, and, you know, see what we can handle, and see what our kids deserve, and make a decision from there. But this is not easy for any of us. I'm sure people sitting with NSCA know that some of these decisions will greatly affect the conversation at my Thanksgiving Day table, and not in a positive way either. So, you know, it's, this is difficult for us to do, and I thank you for being here and showing us the support that you've shown us.
I can assure you that, you know, again, we are the fiduciaries of the taxpayers' dollars, and we have to do what's right for everyone, but I can assure you that none of us here want to cut a dime. So, with that, we have participation in government students out there that we need to let go. Come on up, and we'll sign your stuff. A little late. I didn't get bought, nobody, nobody was hitting me with the freaking, getting the hook out. Come on up, anybody can sign them. Anybody can sign them. Great speech, by the way. There you go. Thank you.
When they got married, he said it was just a person. He said they didn't wear a skirt, they didn't wear a jet ski.
The, our city basketball team. Yay! For their second straight state championship. They're phenomenal, awesome. And I apologize for not mentioning that. Okay, our routine, well, where did we lose Bob and Pat? We got five here? Yeah, we got five here. We can move. Routine action items. Were there any questions on items A, B, C, D, or E? Take your time, Pat, don't worry. Any questions? Nope. I will wait for them to come down. Run, 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 run! Sorry about that, guys. There are no questions on routine action items. Can I have a motion to take them as a group?
Go move.
Sandy? Is that Jackie?
Yep.
Recommended action is to approve A, B, C, D, and E as submitted. All in favor? That's unanimous. Item A is the approval of the notice of budget hearing and electrics, and election. Any questions on that? Nope. Hold on, let me get that. There we go. Do we need a, bear with me here.
While you're getting to a Pat, I'm going to abstain from B because of my employer.
From, oh, okay, no problem. There's no roll call on that, so the recommended action is to approve the notice of budget hearing and election. There's no comments, questions, or discussion. Do I have a motion? Michael, second. Sandy, all in favor? That's unanimous. Fiber optics resolutions. Did you want to talk about that?
I can just explain it really quick. All of our buildings are connected with fiber optics, and then we have a connection from our district to the CNY Regional Information Center. And we do that through, we contract through BOCs, and they enter into an agreement with Fiber Tech Networks in Rochester. So this result, these, this set of resolutions, these two resolutions lock in our costs for the next year, our next five years, I should say. And it looks like we're going to have a savings of about $88,000 a year with this pricing.
Wonderful. One of the best things we did many, many years ago was to install those fiber optic lines. Okay, any questions? Discussion? Recommended action is to approve those resolutions. Motion, Michael, second. Tony, all in favor? That's everyone except Pat, he had to abstain. Amendment of the 2011-2012 district calendar? Do we have any?
We're proposing that the 26 be changed from a half-day of instruction for kindergarten through fourth grade students to a full day of instruction for grades K through fourth.
Questions on that? Comments? Recommended action is to amend the 2011-2012 district calendar. Motion, Tony? Second, Jackie? All in favor? That's unanimous. Do we need an executive session before we take up personnel items A and B? Recommendation to take them as a group? First, Sandy, second, Jackie. Before we vote, I'd just like to acknowledge retirements. Kathleen Dapsen, family and consumer science teacher, retires after 15 years of service. Anne Freeman, elementary teacher, retires after 15 years of service. Elizabeth Meyer, library and media specialist, retires after 20 years of service. Bonnie Miller, 27, I'm sorry. Bonnie Miller, teaching assistant, retires after 22 years of service. Alma Zaluski, family and consumer science teacher, retires after 15 years of service. I, I used to always say that, that Art Russell used to total up the years for me, and he'd always say, we, we lost this many years of experience, but I was always able to say that we hired new teachers that would become the future great teachers of our district. I can't say that anymore. Last year at our new teacher orientation, John, what, there were four people that were new teachers, three or four. There were more board people and, and, and directors there than there were new teachers, and that's a sad thing. Sad thing. But congratulations to these wonderful people. We'll miss them, and we wish them well in their retirement. Yeah, sure, go ahead.
And I don't like to single out one person because these people, these people are awesome. But I have to congratulate Elizabeth Meyer, who was librarian at Bear Road, the entire 27 years, I believe, who turned a library into one of the greatest learning areas. It has to be the largest elementary library. And one thing Elizabeth did is she listened to her teachers, I mean, she communicated with her teachers on what kinds of things we wanted in that library, and she built up the number one nonfiction libraries. Lot of elementaries do a lot of fiction, but Elizabeth, 20 years ago, started building up a nonfiction. She will be missed dearly. She's a close friend of mine. All the book fairs, Sandy knows she worked the book fairs. Sandy was there all the time with the refreshments in the library for the book fairs, but Elizabeth Meyer will be missed by this district.
I just want to point out one thing. I was in Ms. Centaur's kindergarten class when Dorit Lofter decided to take a position at the high school, and Mrs. Meyer walked into the magic carpet and read us a book for the first time in her own library. And I will miss her, and so will my children.
Thank you.
And Elizabeth's retirement after 27 years reminded me that I'm old because I was, I was on the committee that hired her, and she, she had gone back to school. She was a teaching assistant. She had gone back to school, first to get her bachelor's and then her master's and her library science degree. And we unearthed the library. It was like an archaeological find, and Elizabeth was instrumental with Gene Beulah in getting our libraries automated. And so that we could do, we could do one of the most cumbersome jobs as a librarian is to do your inventory and your shelf list. And having it automated makes what used to be one of the most loathsome and time-consuming tasks into, you know, an easy thing. But I will miss Elizabeth. She's terrific lady.
Thank you. Okay, recommended action is to approve A and acknowledge B as submitted. All in favor? That's unanimous. I'd like to make a motion that we move to executive session for the purpose of reviewing the personnel record of four individuals with no action to follow. Second, Tony, all in favor? That's unanimous, and we're adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you.